Got a little bit of some business to take care of before we do start the actual commission meetings. So prior to that, first I want to say that on schedule after D planning and zoning, we'll have the gentleman from Mr. Miller from Indiana Members Credit Union's office. If you want to get that.
Mr. Core.
Yeah. I'm just looking at who signed the paper. Anyway, that will be between D and E, just for that, so you know that. And then to start with, we will convene a public hearing today, August 10th, 2020, at 3:01 PM to receive comment on Johnson County Commissioners Ordinance Number 2020-09, an ordinance vacating right-of-way acquired from Al Gore by Johnson County Department in 2010-027876. Members of this public appearing at this hearing have a right to be heard regarding the ordinance. Is anyone present this afternoon who would like to be heard? Amen. Seeing none, with no one appearing as comment, we will now close the public portion of the hearing. And the public comment portion is closed at this time, and we can discuss the ordinance 2020-09 at this point in time if anyone wants to discuss it.
Well, basically, this ordinance is what we're doing. We're vacating certain right-of-way that the county had. If you're familiar with Dyce Walk Country Club, used to be Royal Country Club, when there was a realignment of Gulfview Drive with Demery Road, the club gave up the properties to make that aligned realignment occur. In exchange, the county was going to vacate the old right-of-way and a couple of other pieces in there. Basically, that's what we're doing here with this ordinance. Or the other one, I don't know. We got two. This is the first one.
They're both four.
Yes.
We'll have to discuss that on that.
Yeah.
At this point in time, I'll make an entertaining motion.
I'll move.
Have a motion this second. Hearing none, all those in favor, say motion carries. entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second, we're adjourned. Now, we'll convene a public hearing today, August 10th, 2020, at 3:03 PM to receive comment on Johnson County Commissioners Ordinance 2020-010, an ordinance vacating right-of-way for the alignment of Gulfview Drive. Members of the public appearing at this hearing have a right to be heard regarding the ordinance. Is anyone present this afternoon who would like to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close this portion of the comment.
intersection, so right at that intersection in the middle of 135 and Gulfview or Demery Road, and about a five-foot separation between the two. And it wasn't until several years after the work was done and everything was completed that we realized that what the state had used for DLZ was the engineering company, the point they had used was the one the state has had established. And it was off about five foot. And the net effect of that was the old property owners wound up owning five-foot strip about 30 feet down the southern part of Gulfview Drive, and the county owned five feet up on their property on the other side of their property. So this is just a matter of exchanging those two and getting things set straight at that intersection.
At this point in time, I entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Sorry. Have a motion a second to approve the second. Public, first public hearing. Hearing. Anyway, have a motion a second to approve the ordinance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say nothing.
Aye.
Oath. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion a second, we're adjourned.
I just want to say thanks to Sheena and Luke Mastin, the Director of Highway Department. It's only taken us eight years to do this, but we finally got it done. There was a number of reasons involved in taking that that long, but we're really glad. And I know that people over there are glad to get it taken care of.
With that said, I would like to call to order this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this 10th day of August 2020 at 3:06 PM. And please pray with us. If you would care to, we will stand up and pray, please.
Would you bow with me for a moment of prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, as always, we come to you with grateful hearts. Dear Lord, I'd just like to echo the words of Benjamin Franklin when he said, "I have lived, sir, a long time, and the longer I live, the more convincing proofs I see of this truth, that God governs and the affairs of man. And if a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his notice, is it probable that an empire can rise without his aid?" Dear Lord, we just implore you for that aid to save this great country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. End of I-69 project status update.
Good afternoon. Let's let you know eight years for an infrastructure project is pretty much par for the course in terms of wrapping things up and getting all the things spread away.
Excuse me, can you give us a little more about?
Yes. Testing one, two, three. No better. My name is Andy Dietrich. I work for EndOD's major project delivery division. I-69 Finish Line is one of our major projects that we're working on. We do have a little bit of a presentation because you have a long agenda, a lot of work to do. I'll try to get through it quickly. Anyone need a hard copy of what we're going to be talking about, or is that part of your time?
I'm recut later.
Again, this is just a quick overview of where we are and a little bit about where we're going to be going. Next slide, please. Going to talk about the progress to date. We started in early 2019. Construction update, what's going on there that you may not have seen, although it's getting very, very visible. What's coming up, and then some ways for you and your constituents to stay in touch with the project as we become more, you know, farther along. It's going to get busier and it's going to get more complicated, and that kind of communication's going to be very important. This is an overview. We are talking about a $1.5 billion interstate project. We're going to be upgrading State Road 37 to interstate standards from Martinsville to Indianapolis, including added travel lanes on I-465 from I-70 on the west side to I-65 on the south side. The schedule was originally planned for 2027. Governor Holcomb said, "Sharpen your pencils, folks. Let's see if we can get that done a little sooner." The schedule now is open to traffic by the end of 2024. That's three years that had a pretty significant impact on the schedule, but it also, there's some good reasons for that. Getting an asset out there sooner rather than later, it's a lot safer and can save tens if not hundreds of billions of dollars in inflationary costs over that three-year period on an open and a half billion dollar project. It's the sixth and final leg of I-69 from Evansville to Indianapolis. In Evansville, they're already talking about Section 7, which is a bridge over the Ohio River between Henderson, Kentucky and Evansville. Next slide, please. You may be familiar with this map. The 26-mile corridor has been broken into five construction contracts. Contracts one, two, and three are currently active. Contract four will be letting in November. Contract five is a little different. It's a design-build-best-value project, which means it's a public-private partnership where it's not the low bid. We can take into account other value-added things like schedule, materials, maintenance of traffic scheme, those kinds of things. The two proposer teams have put in proposals. Those are due tomorrow, and they will be evaluated for about a month, and we'll come up with a preferred proposer team in November timeframe. So we should know who's on board, who's going to be doing the work on contract five then. Next slide. So in Martinsville, we're starting right at the very bottom, right in Indian Creek, which is the dividing point between I-69 Section 6 and I-69 Section 5. The work being done on the main line is mostly on the southbound lanes right now, and that's in preparation for the closure in 2021. That closure of State Road 37 will be from Indian Creek or just south of the 39 interchange up to just north of State Road 44, just south of Morgan Street, if you're familiar with that. Morgan Street will continue to be an access point to Martinsville during construction. Most of the work being done right now is on State Road 39 in the upper left. You see some of the work they're doing on sewer and water and widening State Road 39 to four lanes to be ready for the closure in '21 to accept additional traffic. You can see some of the new pavement going down in the lower left. And wrapping though contract one, they had their first, you know, end-of-construction meeting, punch list meeting today. Grand Valley Boulevard overpass, you can see there on the right, which is open to traffic and being used by the folks in Martinsville on a daily basis. Next slide. North of Martinsville, you'll be seeing a lot of bridge work going on, constructing overpasses and an interchange at Henderson Ford Road, the bridge work at Egbert Road. And I will, anyone who's going to be traveling 37 Wednesday or Thursday night, they'll be setting beams at Egbert. So there'll be 20-minute closures while they set each of the 10 beams that will be going across. The beams are up at Henderson Ford, and they'll be doing work on the bridge itself throughout the summer. Perry Road will be next in terms of getting the bridge and the beams up, ready to go. In addition, there's a lot of work being done with access roads. And if you think about, we'll be down to 10 access points on I-69 between Martinsville and Indianapolis. That's a lot of intersections that are going to be going away. So these access roads are important to have in place prior to main line construction so people can actually get around and get over the roadway. So at the bottom there, Twin Branch is an extension on the west or the east side that will connect with State Road 44. So there will be access to 37 from Twin Branch during the closure. Morgan Street on the west side, and then New Harmony Road Access Road up there a little bit farther north, which will tie into the Henderson Ford interchange. So the folks coming across the overpass at Egbert Road can connect at Centennial up to Henderson Ford, and that's their access point there. Again, old 37, some work up there by Perry Road where the overpass is going up. And just some construction shots, you know, piers going up, roadways being built, and it's tough to keep pictures current because things are changing on a day-to-day basis out of the construction site. So north of that area, up near Waverly, near 144, Waverly Road overpass is going in. Some access roads on the west that will tie Waverly into Whiteman Road. And the remainder of the work is mostly signal work. That will be important during the closure to help move traffic through the 144 intersection. And there will be a new signal at Bantaw Road to help traffic get on and off 37 during construction. I will note that during the closure in Martinsville in 2021, even though there will be work on the main line north of there up to 144 and beyond during 2021, there will be traffic moving on State Road 37. From Morgan Street up to 144, it'll probably be two lanes, one north, one south, and things will be pushed back and forth, side to side, as they construct new lanes. North of 144, you'll most likely see four lanes of traffic on 37 all the way up to Indianapolis throughout the construction. Next slide, please. And there you can just see some of the work being done on new signals, dirt movement. In the upper right, I will mention that the entire construction zone from just south of 144 all the way down to Indian Creek is posted at 45 miles per hour. There are some gaps between actual construction areas, but it's safer to try to keep everyone slowed down throughout the entire construction zone rather than have speeds come up and down. And that's, a lot of that has to do with the truck traffic we have on 37 right now. There's a lot of dirt being moved up and down and back and forth, and there's a lot more slow-moving truck traffic that we want everyone to slow down and be aware of that. The project office, because of COVID-19, the office in Waverly is closed currently. We will reopen that as soon as it's deemed safe to do so. However, there are many ways that your constituents and yourselves can get information about the project. EndOD4U is the agency's customer service portal for anything that is related to EndOD and roads, and what you see on the roads, what you don't want to see on the roads, and that kind of thing. So feel free to call, email, or go to the website and let us know what your concern is. If it's an I-69 project-related question, that comes directly to me and my customer service team. We tend to, or try to, resolve those issues within two days. So we have a pretty good track record on taking care of those questions about driveways and drainage and things like that, as well as the traffic questions that, you know, folks have all the time. So coming up, the work we're doing now above and beyond the construction is getting ready for the letting of contract four and the selection of a proposer team for contract five. And as I said, those will be out November timeframe. Those folks will be on board, and you can anticipate seeing mobilization through December and probably work happening in contracts four and five early next year in 2021. So as you can see, we've already hit main line construction in 2020. The closure in 2021 will reduce traffic on main line 37 so we can get the contractors for four and five out there, get some work done in '21 through 2024. I think it's safe to say there will be active construction throughout the entire corridor from 2021 through open to traffic at the end of 2024. These are some ways to stay in touch. I know you're all social media mavens. We hope that you're following us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. The easiest way is to go to the website, i69finishline.com, and sign up for email or text alerts. We do a weekly electronic newsletter that goes out to about 11,000 people. We would like to grow that number. It talks a little bit about the project, progress being made, and what folks can look forward to for the next week when it comes to maintenance and traffic. There's all the contact information. We do encourage you to stay in touch. You know where to get me. You can always find me or Brad. But sometimes it's easier just to go through the social, either the social media or the customer service channels for a quicker resolution for your constituents who may have questions or concerns. And with that, that's all I have, is a very quick overview. If there are any questions, I'll take those, or I will be around after the meeting if you want to get on to the other things.
So Andy, the closure from 39 up to 44, you're rewrapping everything over to 67 and up?
Correct. That will be the official detour from 144, from 37 to 144, over to 67, down to 39. A lot of improvements have been made on 144 and on 67 in the last two years to accommodate the additional traffic. And I know the Seymour District has some work on signal synchronization and intersection improvements north of 144 to handle that additional traffic. During construction, we will be going with our traditional alternate routes. If you want to avoid the construction altogether, I-65, State Road 46, and then back over to 69, even 70 to 231 down to 46, if you want to stay off of the construction zone, off of the heavier traffic on 67, there are other ways. We've pretty much worked with the districts to clear the deck of any major work on north-south roads during the next four years. So 135 should be clear, 65 should be clear, 67 should be clear, other than the additional traffic we anticipate.
Thank you.
I think as we get deeper into this, we are more than happy to come and give updates on a more frequent basis as things, things start to get busy in the corridor. So thank you for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate it. Officials in Department Head, Sheriff's Office, Brayden Business Systems, Maintenance Contract Addendum, Lease Agreement.
Good afternoon. Dwayne Burris, Johnson County Sheriff, Brayden Business Systems. It's a maintenance contract addendum to the lease agreement out here for the civil process division.
Motion is second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, say nothing. Oath.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Clerk Michael, General Corporation, First Amendment to Agreement for Election Consulting Services is the first.
Hello. I'm clerk. So I am on the agenda for a couple of things. The first one is I am asking to lease another laptop and Outlook reader for the election. It's going to be really busy. And we can lease this laptop and another reader for $1,000, speak for the one day, hopefully. If they ever make how many one day. And Sheena's already looked at it. Yes.
Sorry. Motion is second. Any further?
Go on further on the story. I'm not going to. How's that?
We're a little early. Maybe. Hearing none, all those in favor, say nothing. Oath. Motion carries. Pretty willing to buy up from the care grant.
And I apologize, I already paid for this grant. $54,000, but I am asking for your permission.
So we want to ratify.
Yeah, we're going to ratify that.
Have a motion is second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, say nothing. Oath. Motion carries.
How did you calculate the favorable portion of that?
Just from the 2016 election, how many workers we needed for the primary.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
How's the link over there? Good so far?
So far. Thank you.
And any further?
No.
Health Department.
Betsy Swearingen, Director, Johnson County Health Department. I'm here just to ask, to apply for the IT portion of the Indiana State Department of Health Care's grant to the tune of about $264,000.
Motion is second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, say nothing. Oath. Motion carries. Yeah, it's already done. It's all right.
No. No, we haven't, no, we haven't done it. We haven't gotten a grant agreement or anything yet. It's just letting you know that it's coming. It'll be tough. It's got to be spent by December 1st, so.
Well, no problem.
We have met, we have met with Chris, and so hopefully see what our IT needs are.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Here, well, planning zone must be there first. Z-1-20, Z-1-20 rezoning from V1 to R1.
Hello. Michelle Anser from the Department of Planning Zone. I have an ordinance to rezone 0.33 acres of property at 3508 North Harrison Street, Indham, Indiana, from V1 business neighborhood to R1 single-family residential. It is a single-family home currently on the property, but the town of Indham is all its own business. So for them to do anything more of a residential improvement on the property, they either need a variance or rezone, so this property owner is requesting rezoning this property. They had a public hearing on July 27th, 2020 at the Plan Commission. They gave a favorable recommendation, and there were no remarks.
Sorry. Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say nothing. Oath. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, we'll have Mr. Core from Indiana Members Credit Union as the question.
Hi, thanks for meeting with me today, guys. My name's Dustin Core, Business Development Officer, Indiana. We're having a ribbon-cutting ceremony. I want to butt up to our parcel right there on the south side of us, just the first 20 feet for parking to accommodate for some of the older individuals that are going to be there, part of our board, members, executives, for walking. Because of COVID, we're going to have to utilize our parking lot for social distancing and things like that. Mr. Johnson here has a document that we wrote up specifying that we damaged a lot anyway, shape and form. We will pay to get that fixed, air raiding, seating, things of that nature. So we'll do that.
We have a standard of harmless and then typically require.
Sorry. All those in favor, say aye. Oath. Motion carries.
What was that?
Nice job on the building.
Appreciate it. Glad to be here.
Glad you got an addition down here as well as for me.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Now, the Highway Department. I'll let him go before you because I know how windy you get. And we're always in a bad mood when you're guys, anybody behind you, if you want to move in front of me.
Is that why I'm always last?
Close to.
I never understood why.
Well, now you know.
Luke Mastin, Highway Director. First item is the opening of bids for our 2020 county-wide road repair program.
Okay. First bid is from E&amp;B K. Policy out of Indianapolis. Their bid is $1,119,69.169. One, 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 nine, zero, six, nine, point, six, nine. The next one is from Harding Group of Indianapolis. Harding Group's bid is $995,199.30. Nine, nine, five, one, nine, nine, point, three, zero. Next, we have Milestone. Milestone's bid is $1,367,387.78. One, three, six, seven, three, eight, seven, point, seven, eight. And the last bid is from Reese Riley out of Indianapolis. Reese Riley's bid is $1,217,000. One, two, one, seven, zero, 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 point, zero, zero.
With the Commissioner's permission, I have a department that would like to take the bids through you with an anticipated recommendation for award and contract at your next meeting on August 24th.
Have a motion is second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, say nothing. Oath. Motion carries.
Next item is approval and execution of Amendment Number One to our P.E. Right-of-Way Services contract for our Bridge 602 replacement project. This contract is with Ensign. There were a couple of changes since the original contract was executed. One, we determined that we do not need to acquire right-of-way, which is a bonus in several different ways. We had right-of-way services built into the contract that we're not going to have to pay out now. But unfortunately, in addition to that, we had to do some additional soil.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, the Highway Department. I'll let him go before you because I know how windy you get. And we're always in a bad mood when you're guys. Anybody behind you, who wants to move the front?
Is that why I'm always last? Close to.
I never understood why.
Well, now you know.
Luke Mastin, Highway Director. First item is the opening of bids for our 2020 county-wide roof repair program.
Okay. First bid is from E&amp;B K. Policy out of Indianapolis. Your bid is $1,119,69.69. One, 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 nine, zero, six, nine, point, six, nine. The next one is from Harding Group of Indianapolis. Harding Group's bid is $995,199.30. Nine, nine, five, one, nine, nine, point, three, zero. Next, we have Milestone. Milestone's bid is $1,367,387.78. One, three, six, seven, three, eight, seven, point, seven, eight. And the last bid is from Reese Riley out of Indianapolis. Reese Riley's bid is $1,217,000.121700.00.
With the Commissioner's permission, I have a department that would like to take the bids through you with an anticipated recommendation for award and contract at your next meeting on August 24th.
So, I'm moving. Have a motion is second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signature of my saying aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries, sir.
Next item is approval and execution of Amendment Number One to our P.E. Right-of-Way Services Contract for our Bridge 602 Replacement Project. This contract is with Ensign. There were a couple of changes since the original contract was executed. One, we determined that we do not need to acquire right-of-way, which is a bonus in several different ways. We had right-of-way services built into the contract that we're not going to have to pay out now. But unfortunately, in addition to that, we had to do some additional soil pouring and some additional survey for the width of the bridge that we put in. So, in taking both of those changes into account, this amendment actually lowers the contract total by $2,127.
Have a motion is second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signature of my saying aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries, sir.
What, what's the project, uh, that road is going to be closed?
We haven't said a duration yet that for the closure, but actually the road itself will be open. So, the duration would be for the project, the way that we're building it, since we're building it for a future four lane section now.
For two other lanes?
Exactly. We can build one half, keep traffic on the other half and vice versa. So, spin valley road should not have to be closed. There may be minor restrictions and speed limit changes, but the road itself should be closed. Next item is a letter of understanding with Indot for an unofficial detour route during their closure of State Road 44. As you probably know, 44 is closed just west of Franklin. Fourson Bridge work. The official detour route for that closure utilizes State Road 135 and State Road 144. However, most likely traffic will utilize Center Line Road to get around that closure and get into Franklin. So, this letter of understanding allows Indot to reimburse the county if there are damages during that road closure to our road, to our Center Line Road. We've done this in the past on other state road projects.
Sorry. Have a motion is second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signature of my saying aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries.
And the last item is approval of the maintenance plan for aesthetic improvements at our I-69 interchange. At the meeting, at your last meeting, we provided some renderings that showed a lot of work that's been put in, both by Indot and by the county, working together to try to come up with a vision for those interchanges that is similar to what we've developed in our I-69 corridor plan. Now that a lot of those decisions have been made and that's ready for submission for final approval, along with that comes some additional maintenance responsibilities on some of the improvements that are being constructed that Indot would not normally construct. So, that is the emphasis of the maintenance plan that was provided for your review, essentially outlining the things that are above and beyond what Indot would normally do for interstate projects and interchanges that the county will have to take on, agree to take on maintenance responsibility. In the plan, there are questions we have to take into consideration packets. We should have those finalized this week. But generally, I think we've talked about something that will allow us to keep the interchange looking good.
Did you get Andy to agree to airgate all of it?
That was one of the outstanding questions. I hadn't sprung that up.
I'm getting it. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Wait till the last minute.
And this one, the highways. Has she made a motion here?
I do. And one thing real quick that needs to be added. The, the art permit, essentially the submission of that permit for these interchange improvements. The Lock Mueller Group, who is Indot's I-69 project management team submits that on our behalf. So, we've been working closely with them. They had asked if we could sign a, essentially a consent form that makes it official that they're submitting that permit on our behalf. So, it's related to this maintenance plan and the submission of that art permit. We got that today, so unfortunately it wasn't. I get, but it's a pretty straightforward. It's pretty straightforward, I would ask that that be included in your.
I would include that.
Have a motion. Second, with it. Have a motion is second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signature of my saying aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. I think you're a little bit, probably the bids for the restroom is going to be much more. Under the Commissioners, CWC Company contract, Johnson County Park Roof Building B. This is the roof that another contractor had one in the bid, but that contractor has since retired and was not interested in the award that bid. So, it went to the next line, which was CWC. Sorry. Have a motion is second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signature of my saying aye. Aye. Both.
Is this Wayne's original bid or was this to meet the other bid?
He met the other bid. Original Chief Selected Officials Agreement with Regent Con.
Well, I got some questions. Go ahead, Chairman.
Well, the Workforce Board, it's the statutory creation. Kevin technically serves on it. I've gone to the meetings as proxy a couple of times. Sorry, I was eating my card. And this, this agreement is the same as it was five years ago when we signed it and when it kind of came out of nowhere and we came up to do it. So.
Well, all right. Question?
If you have a lot of questions, I thought Commissioner Walz would love for you to take your spot.
I was more than relentless that.
Probably Sheena was the bid.
You'll know what Sheena was a proxy on this.
I was just concerned on page two under Recovery of Misused Funds. Where it says if they, if they're not successful in recovering the misused funds, then all of the other organizations have to beat that cost on a percentage basis. And then they got Johnson County at about 15%. So, I was just curious there as to why if somebody else misused the funds, we got some of that money also in section four, authority to act. It really gives the CEO, which in this case is Commissioner Walz, quite a bit of latitude to integrate this stuff that might not want him to. Not that he would.
I want money.
I don't have that in the future plan draft.
And then I'm always suspecting anything that uses a 2010 census. My word, we've got all kinds of numbers on what the apartment current population is. But those were the three things that are.
Yeah, it's statutory too, that they have to use the latest census figures. I don't know. I know it's entirely up against.
Those were my concerns on that. That thing is so loosey-goosey. I don't even know why we're part of it.
That's, that was my point.
Are we structurally required to be? Well, then I want to leave Kevin on that.
I think I, I think I'd relax the wrong.
No.
You've got a lot of questions.
I don't think you did that.
There's a major requirement. I'm over the age of.
There's a height requirement too. You're under that, right?
Basically, I mean, I compare that, yeah, here, they're saying they take advantage of them. Anyway, what do we need?
I will try to, well, I'll tell you what. I will try to get some of those answers for you. That's the way we're held responsible. That's why I'm going to have Sheena proxy it. She didn't know what Sheena was signing when she signed that.
We'll send Barb with you.
I hate to make a motion to stand, but I guess we got to.
We can, we can, we can say no. And then just send Kevin anyway.
I'll go ahead and move, but let him back in.
Thank you for that. But the gift will be given back someday.
At least I have more experience.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, signature of my saying aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. An acceptance of lowest quote for project pursuant to IC 36 dash 1 dash 12 dash 5 Highway Office installing metal on the north side of the Highway Office building that desperately needs to be done to stop the water from coming in.
Okay. We have three quotes. We have one from Duke Homes for $4,205. One from an extra hand for $3,000. And a low bid was from CWC Company for $2,860.
Did according to that, was it Jason?
Yes.
So, assuming we approve those, do you want Jason to?
I would have to qualify these bids. I try to make sure that they're all.
Then I guess the motion would be for Jason to take the bids, go through them and then just make sure everything is good on those.
You already, have you already done that, Jason? He's already done it. These ones.
Pretty small group. Yeah. So, then basically just need a motion to approve.
Second.
No, we need a motion.
Oh, then I'll do that too. I did both of it.
Are you moving toward?
I'm moving to accept the.
Those bid.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signature of my saying aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. Acceptance of lowest quote for a project pursuant to IC 36 dash 1 dash 12 dash 5 Juvenile Entry. And just my explanation on that is that the sun is coming in there so vividly into that atrium area that we have, that Jason looked at it along with Dan, I think, looked at it too, but there was a couple of ways to handle that. He put up some kind of shades like we did here, which would work over, work out over there. It'd be really, really expensive or to put a layer of, I won't say it here in a minute.
Tint.
Tint film on it. So, we're going to use some mirror tint film on the top and then just tint film on the bottom of that. Where when they're going to take care of that heat and the light coming in there so the deputies can see.
So, we solicited three bids. The first from Mark's Auto Detail, we did not, did not quote. And then we have Tent Kings. Their quote was $8,940. And the low bid was Snyder's Tinning at $5,708.
What was that again?
Five, seven, eight, zero, point, zero, zero.
No sense. This is the way we like. Tent Kings.
Uh, the person, yeah, Tent Kings. Tent Kings.
Cool Kings.
Jason, have you got a chance to review these?
Yes.
They're all low bids complete?
Yes.
With Snyder Tinning.
Have a motion is second for Snyder Tinning. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, signature of my saying aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. He does a really good job, by the way. And he has worked in the past. Acceptance of lowest quote for a project pursuant to IC 36 dash 1 dash 12 dash 5, the Auditor and Treasurer's Office installation of the interior doors at the counters for security and privacy.
Again, we solicited three quotes. The first from CWC Company, we did not quote. And that's from an extra hand who quoted $6,250. And the low bid was from Duke Commercial, $6,016. Six, zero, one, six, point, zero, zero.
No sense.
If you view all this, we're all good, right? Move forward, move forward, do construction on that. Six thousand, sixteen thousand.
Have a motion is second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signature of my saying aye. Aye. Both. Motion carries. Opening of bid received for restroom updates. This is. Virtuous. Virtuous. That's a word you don't hear all.
You'll hear, you'll know why about it.
Okay. First bid is from Edwards Electrical and Mechanical from Indianapolis.
These aren't individuals. These are.
No, they're not, they're, they're not individually. You mean wrapped in a nozzle? No. Individual prices. Yeah, they're individual prices. Yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
You've got all lines right, Jason. Okay. That was just where you were going to use such thing envelopes for each.
Okay, ready? For the courthouse, $41,175. Four, one, one, seven, five, point, zero, zero. West Annex, $33,750. Three, three, seven, five, zero, point, zero, zero. East Annex, $16,750. One, six, seven, five, zero, point, zero, zero. North Annex, $38,805. Thirty-eight, no, three, eight, eight, zero, five, point, zero, zero. Museum, $7,300. Seven, three, zero, zero, point, zero, zero. Prosecutor, $27,530. One, two, seven, five, three, zero, point, zero, zero. Animal Control, $4,080. Four, zero, eight, zero, point, zero, zero. Fairgrounds, $49,310. Four, nine, three, one, zero, point, zero, zero. Purdue Extension Office, $9,275. Nine, two, seven, five, point, zero, zero. Highway Department, $10,140. One, zero, one, four, zero, point, zero, zero. Community Corrections, $5,300. Five, three, zero, zero, point, zero, zero. Training Center, $7,895. Seven, eight, nine, five, point, zero, zero. Dispatch 911, $10,120. One, zero, one, two, zero, point, zero, zero. Juvenile Detention, $46,450. Four, six, four, five, zero, point, zero, zero. Sheriff's Office, $28,415. Two, eight, four, one, five, point, zero, zero. Johnson County Park, $89,820. Eight, nine, eight, two, zero, point, zero, zero. Independence Park, $5,160. Five, one, six, zero, point, zero, zero.
There's all summary on that sheet.
No. What do you have?
No, I'm not that quick on that.
The next is from Stetson Hookham Corporation out of Greenwater. The courthouse, $30,363.30. Three, zero, three, six, three, point, three, zero. West Annex, $24,871. Two, four, eight, seven, one, point, zero, zero. East Annex, $10,684.30. One, zero, six, eight, four, point, three, zero. North Annex, $24,229, wait. North Annex, $24,229.70. Two, four, two, two, nine, point, seven, zero. Museum, $6,139.10. Six, one, three, nine, point, one, zero. Prosecutor, $19,962.80. One, nine, nine, six, two, point, eight, zero. Animal Control, $2,150.50. Two, one, five, zero, point, five, zero. Fairgrounds, $39,650. Three, nine, six, five, zero, point, zero, zero. Purdue Extension Office, $5,996.10. Five, nine, nine, six, point, one, zero. Highway Department, $6,933. Six, nine, three, three, point, three, zero. Community Corrections, $5,351.50. Five, three, five, one, point, five, zero. Training Center, $5,073.20. Five, zero, seven, three, point, two, zero. Dispatch 911, $6,121.50. Six, one, two, one, point, five, zero. Juvenile Detention, $38,045.70. Three, eight, zero, four, five, point, seven, zero. Sheriff's Office, $21,231.10. Two, one, two, three, one, point, one, zero. Two, one, two, three, one, point, one, zero. Johnson County Park, sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and nine cents. Six, seven, two, five, two, point, nine, zero. Independence Park, two thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents. Two, seven, zero, eight, point, two, zero.
Three hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars.
Oh.
I think you're full.
All right. Last one's from Irish Chemical.
Knowing you.
What was the other?
I wasn't paying attention.
You weren't really paying attention to that one either.
Okay, Irish Chemical out of Indianapolis. Courthouse, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. Two, one, two, eight, three, point, zero, zero. The West Annex, nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. Nine, one, nine, six, three, one, point, zero, zero. East Annex, eight thousand, ninety-four dollars. Eight, zero, nine, four, point, zero, zero. North Annex, twenty thousand, eighty-one dollars. Two, zero, zero, eight, one, point, zero, zero. Museum, four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Four, four, seven, seven, point, zero, zero. Prosecutor, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. One, four, eight, one, one, point, zero, zero. Animal Control, one thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. One, five, eight, four, point, zero, zero. Fairgrounds, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Two, five, one, two, zero, point, zero, zero. Purdue Extension Office, five thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Five, three, three, one, point, zero, zero. Highway Department, six thousand, twenty-two dollars. Six, zero, two, two, point, zero, zero. Community Corrections. Four thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Four, one, one, nine, point, zero, zero. Training Center, six thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. Six, five, one, three, point, zero, zero. Dispatch, five thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. Five, one, 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 point, zero, zero. Juvenile Detention, nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. One, nine, five, six, nine, point, zero, zero. Sheriff's Office, fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. One, five, five, eight, nine, point, zero, zero. Johnson County Park, forty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Four, two, one, five, seven, point, zero, zero. Independence Park, one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. One, nine, seven, zero, point, zero.
I would hope there'd be another bid, actually, that seemed to significantly be going down as we go on, so if we have one more, we might get better than.
I, I will say this, is that. The Irish quote's much closer to what I envisioned being that industry than.
Overall, because the first one's kind of scary.
If that, if mine, if my numbering was correct, that one's below the lowest, except for one. One area in the training center, I just missed that one a little bit. Other than that, it didn't turn out.
Did you give us a quick calculation on that, Ron?
You should, we stepped up the call.
Yeah. I'll give you a quick comment on that. It doesn't cost a lot of money to spend on something we don't need.
Well, if we don't spend it, someone else will. And everybody's gonna be doing it, so. That's what's happening.
Problem I have with, when you automate all of that, my experience, most restaurants where things have been automated is. One, the paper towel thing doesn't work, but the battery's dead, or whatever. Can't get any water out of the faucet, so your hands are so. I haven't had a lot of success with those things, or height magnets going forward. Just to me. And I, and I, I'm not real. Now, you say this before, it's still tax dollars you're spending.
But if we don't spend it, we give it back to the state and they spend it.
And he's here.
That's just, I'm just telling you, that's how it works.
Possessory office right there.
That's how it works, I mean, that's the way it's supposed to be. And I will say that some of these areas need to be redone, maybe not necessarily miss, but without any question, but you know, why you do it. You get to do it, but anyway.
One question, is this materials and labor, or is this just like?
Labor's and parts and, uh, there would be things like stainless steel included in that if they had to replace. Instead of replacing the tile, they had stainless steel. They, they figured all that in to make sure they had everything covered.
But the actual devices are not?
No.
This is, that's separate on top of.
This is labor and parts, missing these parts only.
And Portolaster, the danger.
Yes, Portolaster, the danger. That's in Andy's division though. Now he's shaking his head, yes or no, so we got that one. Got that one covered.
Chairman. I, I would recommend, give us a little time to really digest these bids and then we can come back and run any twenty-four B. Or new award.
Fantastic, I, I think that'd be great.
I'd, I'd maybe, yeah, I'd like to see total costs.
We can do that.
Material and labor. This just seems like labor and some ancillary repair items, so I just want to see a total package.
I would assume when you come back, you'll, you'll have all those figures.
No, that's fine, I, I'd give these to him later, because there's a lot of stuff to go through.
Yeah, we're gonna have, you know, the way, the way we set this up is that we could have three different contractors doing these restaurants. So we're gonna award the contracts based on whose law would be the particular facility, so.
My numbers just told me one was all across.
Different one. Training Center, they missed on the training centers. And then plus one.
I'll give you some time to digest. Come back to us at, uh. Later in August, knowing what the date is.
I'm just playing. Have a motion.
That is.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing down all those in favor, so you can promise, saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Wasn't here as bad as I thought it was going to be.
No, you didn't get time tied there.
Awarded approval, well, just a sense, yeah, but that always messes things up. And in a lot of ways. And award approval of construction contract with Duke Commercial for Johnson County Renovation in the south exterior steps. Uh, to the south of the building.
Dan, Dan Cartwright, project manager. Uh, if you recall, we received the bids on July twenty-seventh. Duke Commercial was the apparent low bidder on that. We're now looking for the actual award today.
So. Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing down all those in favor, so you can promise, saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Approval of subdivision drain repair agreement with Will's Lakes East pending approval of expenditure from general fund by council. Then receipt of executed agreement and as of date, required by agreement from below Lakes East. Right?
Correct.
Waiting on that. Uh, also just wanted to add, and I spoke to Gina just prior to the meeting. We need to amend this, just to let some of the homeowners pay the, uh, subject amount upfront. Not do it on a yearly assessment basis, which is being outlined in this agreement. Which is no big deal.
First, if you get all of them to do that, then we wouldn't mean.
Yeah, if all of them did, it'd be, it'd be great.
Problem solved.
Yeah, I can tell you, the latest vote count, there's a hundred and sixty-four homes, members of that HOA. And the latest vote count, they had ninety-six, yes, and fifteen no's. So they got a hundred and eleven responses out of a hundred and sixty-four, that was right, I think, when they gave you that update. It's a big project, it's the, be the first one that's ever been done in the state of Indiana, so we're kind of pioneering some efforts in that regard. Been a long time getting to this point. Do you know anything else?
I'll go first.
Have a motion in a second. I'll second, any further discussion? Hearing down all those in favor, so you can promise, saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Approval of construction contract for subdivision drain repairs with Will's Lakes East. Pending approval of expenditure from general fund by council and also pending execution of subdivision repair agreement with Will's Lakes East.
We opened bids, I don't even know the date that we opened the bids. We opened bids on March ninth, the apparent low bid was Monroe LLC out of Brown County. And, uh.
Who, who is that, Indiana?
Monroe.
Monroe.
L L C is the name of the company. And, uh, they are, uh, they're still ready to go. And, uh, so what we're looking for here is approval to award the contract to the Monroe LLC, subject to all the other approvals that you don't have yet.
Basically, setting is going before council tonight. Move it through.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing down all those in favor, so you can promise, saying aye.
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, this, do you know by any chances Monroe LLC, did they replace the white floor down there when they were in our business, do you know?
No. No.
I assume you knew where it was since you were in business there for a long time. And, and I know they're out, anyway. I thought maybe this was their replacement. Anyway, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jason, for all you did on the other stuff. Good old business, and thank you, Sheena. Uh, juvenile business claims.
Claims, I got the first one, uh, Luke.
Uh-oh.
He had a, uh, ground tree service for thirty-three hundred, was that the Sycamore? By chance?
I wish.
Okay.
Yeah, that was another.
There's something else?
Yeah.
Okay, I just saw that and I thought, I didn't hear we already whacked her, but I guess that's not it.
When, when we're done whacking, we just haven't, haven't got to.
They are, and it's gonna cost more than thirty-three hundred dollars.
Really, you whack that tree down? We'll just leave it closed, let it fall. I'm just kidding. All right, here's my next.
You know I had.
I, I had, there was a credit card, there was two charges. The Honey Creek tackle for a hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-four cents, one the prosecutor's office, and the other county questions.
I had to buy some batch of fishing wire.
Did Joe get the same order?
I got.
That was the job.
Yeah, the hundred and seventy-seven dollars was, that was in that approval to, the prosecutor's office had to send some. Uh, items back to the Federal Reserve. And, uh, we agreed to pay for half of that, since normally we do the mail-in things.
Prosecutor's cost, but fresh.
The prosecutor.
I thought maybe we'd just been difficult bills somewhere, and then when I saw both of them like that. Uh, highway association, uh, highway association, Indiana counties, fifty dollars, does that go to road school or something?
That'd be, that'd be a cheap road, come in here, masked man, that'd be a cheap road school, wouldn't it?
Neil and I are both members of A I C.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
You're not voting members, I hope.
No, 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 I used to be on the legislative committee.
And you never show up.
Well, I don't go anymore, that's why I said you.
Is that what that is, fifty dollar membership?
Yeah, that's our annual membership.
That's cheaper than ours.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, that is. Indiana Association of County Highway Engineers and Supervisors, that's.
What's the acronym for that?
I A C.
I, I, it hurts going, right?
It's an association of Indiana counties.
So, A I C manages the I A C, uh, money, the, the secretary and all the. So, A I C, but that was for the highway.
I was just curious what, what you've been doing with A I C. I got one for the sheriff.
Are you done?
No, but you may have a seat and put your mask back on me.
All right.
Thank you.
Sheriff had one for a hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents, and this is all run together. It's Solomon Jew unto Armada Atomic. Well.
What's, what's the acronym for that?
Yeah, I didn't pay a whole lot of attention to the first fourteen or fifteen letters till I got to atomic. Any idea what that is?
No, but when, when you build it, they will come, right?
Anything with atomic in it, in it, beat my chest, and that's all I got right now.
That's how we follow them.
Yeah, it could be.
It could be.
I make line.
Yeah, they're buying them too now.
Who is?
Sure is. Cause you're shit, you don't have a clue yet, so.
That's all I got.
Maybe jump for a time?
I make a motion again.
Did you move?
I'm, I'm.
You do.
For once. Yes, say.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing down all those in favor, so you can promise, saying aye. Close. Motion carries. Sorry, Sheriff. Are you gonna be at the park this weekend?
I don't know.
That's just like, let everyone know, okay, say, complain, come down here and talk to you.
Not sure yet.
Any, any public comment?
So I gotta say something?
All hearts are pretty unclear.
I think we said, uh, dates and times for our COVID testing site. Um, I believe it will be. The start time on these days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday will be nine A M. On Monday and Wednesday will run nine to six P M. And on Tuesday and Thursday from nine until three. We have to work thirty-five hours, we have to work at least five hours. Has to be open five hours on Saturday, and it has to have after hour times during the week.
Do you wanna come up here and explain to everybody what we're talking about, or about this?
Sure.
Yeah, tell us what kind of test it is, I mean, I know it's.
You're frozen.
But is it the.
You know whatever.
Full nasal swab or the fifteen minute response test?
This is, from what I understand, it's the full nasal swab. Um, it, we were, we're gonna use, we're gonna set up, I believe.
We are, you're good.
We are, okay, permission to speak freely, um, okay, uh, we are gonna set up our Drash Mobile Command Tent in between Scott Hall and Haring Hall. Um, we will, the health department will run its kind of admin out of Haring Hall. But no testing will take place within the building, it will take place, it'll be a drive-up clinic. Um, like I said, we have to run after hours during the week, and we have to run five hours on Saturday, that's part of the grant requirement. So, nine to six, Monday and Wednesday, nine to three, Tuesday, Thursday, we are gonna take Friday off from testing, and then Saturday, nine to three.
And what's the turnaround time on that test?
Don't know.
Don't know.
Don't have any idea, nope, don't know when I'm getting testing kits, don't when I'm, don't know when I'm getting software. Don't know when I'm getting, but I know I'm opening this on September the first, so.
Looks like we're bad air, something else.
So we're using the electronic. Do you take yours or Rick?
We won't be taking temps, period. Um, the goal. Sorry, um, the goal is to, um, use, um, part-time paramedics and E M Ts to do the swabbing, so we won't be using any of our staff members unless we absolutely have to. Like in a time of a shortage of that, and then will you, will. Two to four other employees will be on site during the running of the, of the clinic.
Well, if you put a directional, one of those sandwich boards out there, make sure it doesn't say COVID-nineteen testing in rear. Cause you're gonna be behind Scott Hall and not cover. Trying to get you away, I mean, just accidentally.
Hey, my day is, Dick can only get, hey, you know, this is how it's been, I have Channel Thirteen sitting in my conference room right now, writing their story for, uh, tonight, so, um. Yeah, so it's, uh, or in our studio.
We saw you here a little bit longer.
Well, do you want people to only come and get tested if they think they have some symptoms or had symptoms?
No, you know what I want, I want everybody to come get tested if they want to, but when they come get tested, realize you're gonna go home. And you're gonna sit there and you're gonna wait until you get your test result, because if you turn up to be one of our sixty, over sixty percent asymptomatic people right now. We don't want you running around our county getting other people sick, so.
Stay home, tell the test results come back.
That's what we are going to.
And you don't know how long that'll be?
We, we're understanding if it's gonna go through the state lab, it should be no longer than forty-eight hours.
So they say.
So they say, right. So they say, right. That's what they say today. Tomorrow, I don't know.
So you said.
So I said, so tomorrow, I don't know, maybe, we'll see.
Start it move.
Any other questions? It's very fluid right now. We had heard that we were, in addition to the hundred thousand dollars that we're getting for the COVID testing site, we had heard we were gonna get an additional marketing grant. I don't know, but that turns out that that's not gonna be the case. We're gonna be receiving additional funding for that site to spend in how we feel we may need it. Message boards, maybe something we look at purchasing for advertising purposes.
What do you like for the sheriff's office, is coming from Channel Thirteen?
That's okay, yeah, they were, it was, they were, they were very nice and just asked if they...
So you allow?
So I allowed it to. They're not like camped out there, they were camped out out front, but they're now.
No, they stay more than, than three, four hours.
And charge rent?
Yeah, that'll make them move.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Beth.
Thanks, Beth, appreciate it. Anything else?
Steph, anything on your own, Ron?
Waiting on a new batch of reimbursement papers to be paid. Sent them in last week, so we should hear this week, the last three I sent in.
Yeah, and I, the health department, you should be getting all of our COVID hours from March through July, they should be coming.
Yeah, cause I want it months, one month.
We set it down...
I don't want them all together, I don't, I want them each, by month.
Yeah, we set it deadline by the second Monday of each...
It's easy for them to look at, too.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and I know we're looking at even some transport vehicles, understand that?
Yes, and I am waiting, I talked to Randy. He is getting all the votes and stuff, he's gonna send to me, and then I will send it on, say this is what we want. Are we, are we okay still with this?
Before we...
Before, and I want their...
Oh, I didn't do that, I told Randy, yeah.
I save all those, that's why I forward to you, and I save them, so.
Yeah, I know that, I think there's been approval on the police corners, you know, the county so far for that.
Which, they gave us the original one, but I, we're gonna put everything, he wants to send.
Yeah, before we spend that money, we need to get that verified.
Yeah, get all the shield, prices for the shields in there.
Good idea.
I have an answer for Ron.
Yes?
Sweat boots.
Sweat boots?
Just happens to be the name.
And you know, if an atomic bomb, bomb is, we know the only thing that's gonna be left is those boots, right? Is that what?
Coproaches.
Coproaches. I love that show, I remember the show where the coproaches lived in the 20...
Oh.
What was that show?
I know, it sounds like a little episode of Porter's, but I don't know.
No, it was a baby room, that from one. Anyway.
I got an interesting thing, I just read this this morning, and you can go online and Google Daily Signal and read it. But they were talking about how the CDC is misleading the people in the country on these hotspots around the nation. And, and the top ten hotspots that they're identifying in the country right now, almost without exception, have correctional institutions and nursing homes of high, high volume. And I, one of them is very interesting, in Texas, it was a county that's never had a COVID death, didn't have a hell of a lot of cases, but they got a huge correctional facility there. They had a massive outbreak, and they had like five hundred giant test spots in it. And so they were number six on the national hotspot in the country for COVID viruses. So, you know, maybe this, I'm still railing against all of that, but I just find it interesting how they continue to use certain stats in such a misleading fashion, that's just a shame that you're doing that, but whatever, Sheena Jones, I think.
Sorry. Sorry.
I'm gonna adjourn.
And Lucian's second, we're adjourned.
Hey, guys, thanks for staying, this whole thing, you know.